Hey guys, today I wanted to talk about my 12-hour-long livestream that I did this past Friday. What is today, Monday? Yes, Friday was my livestream. Spent the whole day learning German from 9:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night. A lot of you guys were following me, following my progress. I ended up learning a lot. A lot of German. It was a good experience. It was hard. It was hard. It was tough. I got pretty tired, but it was a good time. It was a cool experience, a cool thing to do. Hi Hamza! I should mention, there were some technical difficulties with with the video after I finished because it got flagged for copyright notice or something. It got flagged for copyrights violation. So I'm across the disputing because I don't think... I think the audio that I used when I was learning German, I think the way that I used it falls within fair use. So I'm hoping to get that restriction lifted so that people can go through and watch the whole thing again. What the issue was is that I was listening to some Pimslar CDs, okay? But I wasn't uploading these CDs for other people just to use for free. I was using them myself and I was adding to them, you know, I was pausing, I was interrupting, I was commenting on them. So, I think I might be able to get away with... Hi Andy, thanks for joining. I think I may be able to get away with my dispute or the, you know, the claim that I'm making on it. We'll see what happens. I guess they have to come to a final decision within the month. Anyways, I want to talk about, not so much about the video, I want to talk about my experience, what I did, would I do it again, what did I learn? Like I said, it was hard. It was work and it was not something that should be taken lightly. If you can just magic, imagine sitting in a chair for 12 hours, you know, doing anything that monotonous, it was hard. But it was a good experience and it's definitely something that I will be doing again sometime in the future. I think live streaming it really helped me stay motivated because I constantly had people encouraging me and, you know, just helping me, people that knew German or people that didn't know German would just leave little motivating comments and stuff. And it kept me accountable because normally if I tell myself I'm gonna do an hour-long study session, then I start and then three minutes in, I remember something that I have to do and then, you know, go do that thing and never get back to my study session. So live streaming it was a real big help. Okay. Sorry, I'm just reading some of the comments here. Is anyone pro in JavaScript? I don't think there's like anyone gonna be able to do that on this channel. I have such a big problem with learning English. Yeah, it takes a lot of practice. And so anyways, getting back to my, getting back to my livestream, it was it was kind of amazing. I wasn't entirely sure what, how it was gonna, how it was gonna pan out, which is exactly why it was an experiment. That's why I did it, right? I wanted to learn more about myself and learn more about my learning abilities. And it was amazing. Andy recommended a YouTube, not a YouTube series, a it was a free, just video series produced by, I think by the German, what was it, Deutsch Bella? Which is, I guess is like a German media company or I don't know if they're connected to the German government. It's designed for beginners, but I was able to watch it and understood what happened by the end of one day of study, which was really kind of amazing. Ulysses NT says, "Hi Aaron, you use audios from..." I, yeah, I use audios from Pimslar and from the Benny Lewis Teach Yourself. Benny Lewis Teach Yourself Language Hacking German. And probably a few other, you know, audio from memorizing stuff like that. The copyright notice was because of the Pimslar audio that I used. But like I said, for those who haven't, for those who are just joining the stream now, there was some copyright violation on it, but I filed a dispute against that because I think I read the YouTube policy and I'm pretty sure I can get away with claiming fair use because I wasn't just uploading Pimslar CDs for people to use for free. I was using them myself and I would, you know, it really was a form of expression and I was commenting on them and I'm kind of reviewing it as I go. So I'm, I think I have a good chance of getting it passed. Anyways, I don't, I don't even really know what gave me this idea to learn a brand-new language for 12 hours at a time. But I'm glad I did. It was just a cool thing to do. I find that the hard things that you do in life are, people always say the hard things in life are the things that are most, are the most rewarding and this is true. Guten Abend, Vautro. Thank you for joining. The hard things in life are the most interesting as well. That's what makes your life different, right? And I'm not sure of many people out there who have done anything similar to that. I found, it was really funny. I did find that throughout the next day or two, what is it? It's been three days now, I guess, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I found myself like randomly saying German words out of nowhere, like talking to myself in German, not even talking to myself, but just like randomly saying stuff. I'd be driving down the road and I would be like, "Entschuldigung!" Or you know, I don't know, I would, I would, I would go to bed and I would say, "Guten Nacht." Which, I guess it was probably unavoidable to start doing the same thing. It's gonna get kind of lodged in your brain, down into your psyche and your subconscious. And it just started coming out. Oh, Stephen Cooper, sorry, I didn't notice your comment earlier. He says, "Hey Aaron, just a quick question since you mentioned the difficulties of staying motivated and on task. I get demotivated when I'm uncertain of progress made. How in the world do you monitor progress?" Progress is really difficult to monitor. Let's see, how did I do it on Friday? Well, it was really easy to monitor my progress during this livestream because, you know, I was starting off at nothing, starting off with zero. So every time I would see a new word, that's learning something. And I did, you know, sometimes it's hard to judge your progress because it was so hard for me to to solidify those words in my brain. Like I would learn a new word, but it takes a while to start to, to really realize if you're, if you've learned it well or not, right? If it'll come back, you know, judging your recall and your recall speed. So that was a difficulty. Towards the end of the night, I really was starting to get faster with picking up, recalling some of the words. Although towards the end of the night, I was also very much brain-dead. So that you have to factor that into it as well. There, I was watching, because I can still watch the video. I was watching some replay of it from about 10 hours and and I didn't realize how dead I looked, but I was sitting there towards the ends, like sitting there like this going, "Der Stier, der Stierzieh, der Stierzieh English, der Stierzieh Deutsch." Andy says, "This always happens to me after I've completed about 10 CDs of Michael Thomas. I start talking to myself in the target language without thinking about it. Audio courses are so helpful." Yeah, it was fascinating to just spend one day. I haven't spent any time since Friday studying German and it's still like coming out. I, like, I was throwing something away in the trash earlier and I don't even know why. As I was throwing something in the trash, I just said, "Ich bin beatles fan." Why did I say that? I don't know. It's just like, it's still lodged in my brain. Sorry, I was displaying my bad posture from Friday and I never went back. So it was cool. What else? Anything I did cool, anything I did strange or could have done better? What could I have done better? I probably should have planned out more what my schedule would have looked like. The only thing I planned on actually doing was spending the first hour doing Pimslar and the second hour doing Duolingo. And then after that, it would kind of like, I would finish up another hour of study or another 45 minutes or so and then I would stop and I'd be like, "Okay, what am I gonna do now?" So that was an issue. Of course, you don't want to get too tied to your schedule. You don't want to get too tied to your, I don't know, routine or planning, but you want to be free, you want to be kind of loose, but still have an idea of where you're going. So I was kind of coming up with stuff on the fly. It's kind, just kind of just how I roll. I also wish I would have spent more time with the Language Hacking Book and I wish I would have spent more time making scripts for myself. Learning things that I can say about myself or learning things that I know will come up when I speak to people, okay? I feel like the little script that I made for this book, the script that I made so that I could record a video for Instagram, that was really helpful because I was memorizing things about myself in German. I was memorizing phrases that I knew were gonna be useful and I actually had to to, just to commit those phrases to memory because I wanted to record a video of myself speaking somewhat naturally rather than just reading the script, okay? And you know, the drilling and stuff on Duolingo or repeating phrases on Pimslar, repeating, you know, testing yourself on vocabulary and memorize, it's all very important as well. But I just wish I would have done more memorization of full phrases of things that are relevant to me. That was one thing that I feel like I would do differently. I will do differently next time because I will do it again. From all the techniques you used that day, which do you think helped you the most? I would say, I would say this Language Hacking Book probably did help me the most. Not just the book, but the technique he recommended. So I'll probably be doing this again for languages where they don't have this book in that language and I'll use the same technique. Memorizing phrases and mini scripts like Benny always recommends. Pimslar also helped a lot. I am glad I started with Pimslar because then you start off by hearing the sounds of the language rather than getting messed up by the letters and the spellings of the language, okay? And German had some funky spellings that would have totally thrown me off and they did start throwing me off after I started reading them, but again, I'm glad I at least started without the letters. Okay, Stephen Cooper says, "Your experiment was definitely really interesting. I think that could be what makes your channel really unique. Wild experiments related to language learning." Yeah, yeah. I don't want to be like all the other language YouTubers out there. You know, they're great and a lot of them have their own kind of little niche area. I know Abigail and Matt from Polyglot Progress are kind of experimental in some ways, you know. Probably a bunch of them other too. You know, Steve Kaufman has his method and Benny has his method. Moses McCormick from Lowashu 5,500 or whatever. He has a really unique method of learning languages. So he has his little, like ultra-specific niche. And I'm just really content to keep trying new bizarre things like this. So I'm glad to hear you say that. Andy Lu, Andy says, "Polyglot Lucas spaghetti does that. Now, he writes questions and answers that would come up in conversation, talking about his hobbies and interests. Then he has some, someone translate and record them in the target language and he'd record them." Yeah, I'm definitely gonna be doing stuff like that the next time I do this challenge, okay? He says, "He writes questions and answers that will come up in conversation, talking about his hobbies and..." Okay, he says, "Then he has someone translate and record them in the target language and he'd record them." Yeah, I had a very similar conversation about this with Sarah Maria from Miss Linguistic about a week ago, I think. Yeah, probably a week ago today, I posted the video. It was like an hour-long interview and it was a very similar thing that she did for her language learning, for her 30-day Record Yourself Challenge. Okay, which was a lot of work because that was doing, you know, doing that every day. It just takes a lot. Finding a native speaker to translate, to correct your monologue and then getting them to record it so you can hear how they sound naturally and then trying to replicate their phonology and their prosody. Very interesting. So I recommend checking out that video if you're interested in just that whole process. There's part of me that just loved this experience so much. I think I might just start doing it in a whole bunch of different languages. I can't do it all the time because you can't always dedicate 12 hours to learning a language every week, but man, I could do this in Italian and Portuguese. Those are some of the easy ones and I could do it in, I don't know, Swedish and then move on to Russian. That would be an interesting 12 hours. Or Chinese, Japanese, you know, I'll probably maybe do it in some of the languages I already know. Do it in Esperanto and French. 12 hours was a bit too long. You can do it for six hours for each language. Yeah, six hours, six hours in a day is probably what I would do if I was really interested in actually learning a language because you don't want to push yourself too far if you're just wanting to learn a language. 12 hours or maybe 10 hours, 10 hours was still kind of pushing it. I don't know, we'll have to see, but to just, to really push your boundaries and see what you're capable of, I liked doing it all day. I liked that. And if there's other languages that I'm not really interested in learning well, but just wanting to get a really solid, I don't know, toe-dip, just dip my toe into the language and just see what it's like. I liked doing that all day long, but I'm not sure if I've mentioned this on my channel yet. I'm probably gonna be learning Thai. I think that might be my next language. And if I do that, I'll definitely be doing this challenge, probably not 12 hours because I want it to be more natural. Thai, yes. I have a sister who is a teacher in Thailand. She teaches English and might go visit her. And I also have several friends that speak Thai. So I'm thinking at this point, that might be my next language that I actually start on. Plus, I like the idea of having, all of the languages that I speak right now are pretty mainstream. Spanish and French are my two main ones. Esperanto is not, okay, Esperanto is not mainstream, but it's a really common thing for polyglots to learn. You know, so you talk to anyone at polyglot conferences and it's just not really exceptional for someone to speak Esperanto. But I don't know, very many people that speak Thai. Even polyglots. So I like kind of delving into the unknown a little bit. Ollie Richards and John Von did a three-month Thai language project and recorded videos of their process. Cool. That'll be something cool for me to check out. I might even do more, like I might, it'd be cool to do like a week-long, like a week, a week of live streams in a language. You know, like, it wouldn't be 12 hours a day for a week, but maybe eight hours a day for a week? All on YouTube, that would be cool. That's something that I would consider doing. What else? Yeah, we'll see how this copyright thing with Pimslar goes. If I get my dispute accepted, then, you know, then no harm, no foul. If not, then I'll have to be more careful about what, what, what resources I use during the live streams. Although again, it's not about the video, it's half of it is about the experience that I want to get, but the other half is also I want people to see that experience and I want people to be able to learn from it and you know, just see the process that you go through when you're learning a new language. Stephen Cooper says, "Have you discussed New Year's goals related to language learning? What are your current specific goals?" I don't tend to set New Year's Eve or New Year's goals. New Year's, what do they call them? New Year's resolutions. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Probably sounds really unmotivated of a thing for me to say. I set goals all the time. I mean, I just don't choose New Year's to be the time that I set my resolutions. Hi Gustavo, thanks for joining. Glad to have you. Andy says, "For tonal languages, I recommend innovative language podcasts to start out with, i.e. ThaiPod 101. They can speak quickly, then slowly, so you can repeat at slow speed and hear it at a native speed." Cool. Yeah, I'm gonna have to do a lot more research, do a lot more thinking. It's not a guaranteed thing yet, but that just seems like it would be something cool to do. So, yeah, I don't know if that tells you anything about this challenge that I did on Friday, but I'm willing to do it again. And in fact, I'm willing to do it again many times. Like, I could see myself doing this once a month or something like that with a whole bunch of different languages. Rania says, "Do you want to learn Arabic language or it's hard?" It is hard, but that would be a language that I might choose. At first, I'll probably do it in languages where I'm more familiar with the script, which is why I said Italian, Portuguese. Those would be easy because I already speak Spanish and French, maybe Romanian. It'll be interesting to do it with different, different languages that have less resources, right? Because for German, it was easy. I just type in "free German language course" and you find it, right? Or you just get the Benny Lewis German. Right? If I want to learn Slovenian for 12 hours in a day, I'm gonna have to do some more searching and a lot more preparation, buy some resources off eBay probably or off of Amazon. Find some crusty old book that was printed in 1957. Just started Tagalog. How do you even pronounce that word? I've always, to me, it looks like Tagalog, but I've always called it Tagalog or something like that, even though it looks like it would be pronounced Tagalog. Tagalog or Tagalog, I don't know. Should be something to know if you're a linguistics major. Tagalog. Yeah, okay. I was close. I'm not entirely sure the quality of those vowels, but I, yeah, for some reason I was thinking the stress was, should be on the second syllable, although it just looks like it wouldn't be. It, just looking at the word, it looks like it would be Tagalog. Stephen said, "It would be fun to engage in your hobby interest in Warcraft and Spanish." Yeah, yeah, I could have been doing that. I could have been playing video games or something or find, you know, pull out my guitar and play some, try to go through some children's songs in German or something like that. Yeah, that would be cool. I'm gonna, yeah, that would be something for me to think about after next time. That opens up a lot of possibilities. Vautro said, "From a linguistic point of view, it would be interesting to try some BASK at some point. I've heard that it's not related to any other language." Yeah, BASK is what they call a language isolate. It actually existed in Europe since before the Indo-Europeans came. And somehow it was just one of the few few pockets that was able to survive through, through the Celts and the Romans and the, you know, the Arabs. So that would be a cool language to spend a day learning. And I'm not sure how many resources there are out there for BASK. It doesn't seem like one that would have a ton of, of people learning it. It's like, you know, in the polyglot community, you always get these people that are learning languages and you're like, "Who are you ever gonna speak to in that language?" But it's like, it's like, it's just a nerd thing, you know, you learn it just because, I don't know, you have some reason to. Or you don't have a reason, but you're just still doing it anyways. It's kind of like, what would you say? I'm trying to think of a good comparison in life, like, I don't know, you just find people with strange hobbies and you're like, "What would draw you to that?" I don't know, but, you know, but there's a community of people that are doing it, so, you know, so it's not impossible to get into. So there's gotta be some resources out there. I do know at least one person, I have one contact online that I know who is learning BASK. Most of the resources are in Spanish, that makes sense, but fortunately for me, Spanish is my strongest language aside from English. Hi Rasmus, thanks for joining. Happy New Year to you too. Or like Warranee. I bet you Warranee would be the same, like, no one's learning Warranee and if they are, they're from Bolivia or Paraguay or somewhere. So, yeah, I don't know. I guess I've talked about mainly everything that I that I meant, all the topics that I meant to hit today. Yes, there was a copyright violation on it, on my video. But I have disputed it. So it's in the process, I've, so my claim is going through the process in YouTube. I went and I looked up YouTube's Policies on copyright and fair use. And. It it seems like, so. It seems like um. Obviously, their copyright policy is designed to prevent you from uploading someone else's material. Just for other people to use, right? So if I were to go and upload a Pimsleur. CD to YouTube, just the audio from the Pimsleur. That's a clear violation. Of co- copyright policy. Then they have what's called a fair use. Um where if you're adding something to it, if you're commenting on it, if. It there's a lot, there's a lot of gray area and there's. And it's, there's some fuzzy definitions in there, so uh nothing is for sure, but. I feel like I have a strong case to make that my video was twelve hours long and the video was clearly designed. For me learning German and for me helping other people learn German. And this video is not. Likely to cause the Pimsleur company. To lose any profit because no one's gonna go and sit and watch. Thirty lessons, or sorry, I did two lessons out of thirty lessons. Per course and there's five German courses. So. I don't see it being a really big deal. Like I said, I contested the copyright dispute and now we're waiting back to hear. They said sometimes it takes a month. So. We'll see how long it takes. Channing says, you you enjoy gamified ways. Have you thought about writing out a script of questions and answers? Yeah, in fact, I did that. Uh not a script of questions and answers. But I did that. On Friday, I wrote a script of things that I wanted to say. And make a video of myself and I posted it on Instagram, so that was fun. I wish I would have done that a few times throughout the day, made a few different videos. That's what I'll do next time. Okay, um. It wasn't Pimsleur actually, I'm not sure what you meant. By that. I I so I received a notice from YouTube saying that you're uh. Yeah. It would, so apparently Pimsleur must be owned by some other company or something like that, but I I received a a. Notification from YouTube saying this video is currently blocked because it contains. Pimsleur course. Pimsleur German course one. At, you know, lesson two. Or something along those lines. So that's what it was. It was, it was Pimsleur um that caused the. The the violation to get flagged. But like I said, we're in the process of disputing that and we'll see. And if not, then I'll at least try to see if I can get them to. To let me download the video, remove that portion and then upload the rest of the eleven and a half hours of the video. Right? Okay, Rania said, I wish you the best. Happy New Year to everyone. Thanks. The gates. Yes, how do you you say? If gates it. Uh it gets is good, it's good. Gosh, it's only been three days and I'm already having trouble saying this. I'm not sure if I ever actually fully solidified that that phrase though. The gates. If it is. It gets it's good. Um I saw the message that something like CBD or some, oh yeah, I already read that. Goodbye, Rania, um. So, uh. So I'll, like I said, I'll be doing this again. If I don't, if I'm not able to get this copyright issue resolved. Then I'll just have to find other resources to use in my future videos. Oh, Mir Gates good. Need a gate school. Okay, I knew it was something along those lines. Okay, Channing says you should think about creating a flowchart with a gamified approach. I think you'd be good at that. Flowchart with a game of credit. Game of flight approach. What do you mean by that? That sounds like an interesting concept. I I'm having trouble. Visualizing what you what you mean. Mir geht's ist gut. Sehr gut danke. Sehr gut, sehr gut danke. Yeah, that's a good response. And then you can always say. Right, rather than asking the question, it's an easy way to respond. Sehr gut danke, und du. Mir geht's gut. No, bonjour, no, uns dir. Und dir. I felt like for some reason in here it said you could say uns du. But uns dir. Und dir. But then again, Benny doesn't always recommend speaking properly, so. He might have just been simplifying it even though it's grammatically incorrect. Not sure. Yeah, here says uns du. In German, it's, he says, if you're uncomfortable doing a lot of talking at first, a trick I like to use is to bounce the. Question back to other person. German, it's easy to do with a simple und du. Und du can also be used as a universal question that saves you the burden of memorizing hundreds of questions. Oder und ihnen. Oder und ihnen. That's the, that's the formal way, right? Okay, Rasmus A says, I warned you it might happen and you said that you could use headphone. I wish you just did that. Yeah, I wanted to do that, um. I actually was planning on doing that. Problem is. I felt like it would have been a very boring video for people to watch of me just saying stuff. It's a lot more. It's a lot more educational for people who are trying to learn German if they could also hear it along with me. But yeah, you were right. You're right, but that's why I didn't wanna do it that way. Um but maybe in the future I'll do that, or if I can find other audio. Hopefully my copyright thing, hopefully my dispute gets resolved. In my favor, so that way I can just continue doing it. Obviously, I'm not just gonna be posting. Uh Pimsleur courses. I'm not just gonna be pirating them and posting them for people uh to use for free. I wouldn't do that because they're a company, you know, and they, you know, they spent money. To make their courses and they wanna make money back. I understand that. But I really just don't think it would be hurting their profit. If. If I do it in that way, where I'm. Uh recommending for people to buy their course and then I give them a sample of me, of me using. The course while commenting and reviewing it. Okay, Channing says flowcharts are used for languages and their families. Like West Germanic breaks down into English. Netherland, like German, etc. That's a flowchart. So if you use it with questions and answers, one question can lead to somewhere else. Hard to explain. Yeah, I think I get where you're going with that, you know. That is an interesting idea. Valtro says, good luck with the dispute. Thanks. Rasmus says, yeah, I remember you said it will be boring if the viewers just hear your response back. YouTube is making, making life hard. Yeah. Now, so at this point though, the only reason that it's been flagged is because that audio was found on there, okay? Um they haven't actually considered yet whether it can be considered fair use. It was an automatic. Uh like it was detected automatically. It was detected by the computer. Okay, now the computer. Isn't able to make judgment calls about whether I was using it in a fair way or not. The computer just. Digitally recognizes the copyrighted audio. And then just automatically sends you a notification and blocks the video. Okay, um. A judge, a human judge has to be the one to decide if it's fair use or not. From what I understand, this, you know, I was reading up on the whole process. Okay, with free courses like Language Transfer or Book Two, Book Two, you can probably do it your way without copyright dispute. Yeah, that might be a better. And here's the thing, here's the irony of the situation. I know Pimsleur is. Trying to protect their profits by by. Making copyright copyright claims, but. I've always been pretty good to the Pimsleur company by recommending them, telling people to go out and get them. And I'll continue to do so because I think they make a good product. If I can't be using their. Product on my videos, I'm gonna start recommending. Language Transfer or Book Two or other things that might not be as high of a quality. Or I don't know, maybe they are as high of a quality, I don't know. But if I can't use Pimsleur on my videos, then I'm gonna be using these, I'm gonna be recommending these other resources on my videos. Um especially these long ones where I'm learning specific languages. And that doesn't help Pimsleur at all. I don't know, it's just ironic. Um Rasmus says, it's scary that Google is listening to us. Some people said that they saw recommended videos based on. Things they mentioned in their videos. Yeah, um they have automatic voice recognition, which is why you can click on. Automatic subtitles. Even if I don't put subtitles on my videos, you can still. Click on auto generate subtitles and it'll still have the voice recognition. And and give you subtitles in the language that I'm speaking. And then. Those subtitles that are automatically generated, whether you want it to or not. The the words in your videos get used in metadata. That, you know, can be used in search results and stuff like that. So they know what you're talking about. But anyways, hopefully this copyright thing gets resolved and I'll be able to. Continue promoting Pimsleur on my videos like I want to because I believe in their, their system. Uh and then it'll be better for both of us. And if not, then I'll just. You know, I just have to abandon them. Which which won't be better for either of us, I don't think. Okay, um. Channing says, people normally change the speed of audio for things like Pimsleur, so it's not recognized. Yeah, I I know people can get tricky with that. Google also has ways of. I mean, they're not, they're not easily fools. You have to do things like change the audio and put it through a low pass, low pass filter and. You know, if you're gonna, for people that put copyrighted videos on, they have to like. Flip the screen around and like put it in a small portion of the screen and make it grainy and stuffs. So that Google has a hard time recognizing it. As copyrighted material and I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna be honest about it. If. If the way that I use their content is not fair use. Then I will stop doing it. But then they're just not gonna get free promotion from me. Like they have been. But I'll still keep using their products in my. Personal life, but I just won't be able to use them on my videos and. Well, I can still recommend it to people, but I'm gonna be recommending the the. Audio sources that I can. Actually show them, you know, um. We'll see what happens. Hopefully this all gets resolved in a positive way for all of us. Yeah, that's funny. Channing says, I love, uh. Channing says, I love Pimsleur, funny how you turned me on to it. I know, it's because I recommend Pimsleur all the time. I've probably brought them a lot of, a lot of business. Uh through my end. You know, I've done videos recommending them by. Showing their uh. By using their audio in the past, by actually using their their CDs on my videos. Which is funny now that, now that I do a twelve hour video. Where only one twelfth of the video is me using Pimsleur. It's funny that that's the one that gets flagged as opposed to the ones where I would make a video called. How I use Pimsleur. And then for ninety percent of the video, it's me using Pimsleur and that video doesn't get flagged. Rasmus says, I missed the beginning. When I arrived, you were mentioning Basque, so are you planning on doing another challenge like this? Yes, I will. I would. I'm seriously considering doing a lot of videos like this. Like maybe a whole series of them. Twelve hours learning Italian, twelve hours learning Swedish, twelve hours learning Japanese, twelve hours learning. Arabic. Um I feel like that's a really interesting way to get. Kind of a foothold or just kind of a little bit of introductory knowledge about a ton of different languages. Um and I've never been the kind of person. I know there are people out there who are like learning seven languages at a time. And I'm not. Dissing those people, but that doesn't seem like something I would really wanna do. I don't wanna spend. Months learning Bulgarian when I'm still not quite to. To uh. The level that I wanna be in French yet, okay? To me, French is a much more useful language and I want to become proficient in French before I start dabbling in Bulgarian. Okay, I don't want to. Dabble images. I want to be, I want to become proficient in the few languages that I speak. But that doesn't mean I'm not interested in other languages, because I still wanna see what they're like and I still wanna learn about them. And to me, spending a day intensively studying a language. Doesn't take a whole lot away from your other languages. Um it takes a day away from your other languages. But I can still give you a lot of insight and a lot of. Just understanding of the way that language works. So I I'm liking this idea. I'm thinking I might. Start. Uh a a series like that. Like maybe once every other month or something, do a twelve hour video. Twelve hour livestream. For some, it won't all, maybe. Twelve hours isn't set in stone. Twelve hours was a very long time to do it. Maybe ten hours. Language learning is a big commitment, yes. Yes, and. I don't hold it against other people when they want to learn. A whole bunch of languages, but it just. It's not what I wanna do. I don't wanna spend. I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time learning. Minority languages that I'm not that interested in, uh when I could be. Dedicated in that same time to actually becoming proficient. In a language that I care about learning. Obviously, people only learn languages that they care about learning, but. To me, it's more important. To become. More proficient in a language rather than just dabbling in a whole bunch of them, although. I'm sure, you know, that's just my opinion. I'm sure there are people that. That just want to get a wide and broad. View of of the large spectrum of languages and they want to uh. Their goal is not to become proficient in many languages. Their goal is to. Um you know, become conversational. In many languages, which is perfectly acceptable. If that's what you want, but you have to be honest with yourself and say. I know I'm not gonna become fluent. I know I'm not gonna reach a C one level in all of these languages. Okay, cuz it's not possible if you're learning seventeen languages at a time. But a lot of people like music McCormick, learning thirty languages at a time. He is honest with himself and he is not, his goal is not. To become fluent in all thirty languages. His goal is to go to the Korean restaurant and be able to piece together. A broken conversation with the waitress, okay? And to do the same thing when he goes to the. I don't know, the the Egyptian restaurant and the Senegalese restaurant. And he's really amazing and I. Have a lot of respect for him. But you just have to be honest, he's not good in many languages, okay? Cuz he spends so much time dabbling. Cuz he spends so much time dabbling. Okay, Channing says, what you got, what got you into learning Spanish and then French after? What set your mind to those two languages? Well. People might get mad at me for saying this, but Spanish is just the language that makes sense to learn if you live in the United States like I do. Okay, unless you live in maybe Vermont. Or some small pocket, uh, you know, if you live on an Indian reservation where there's. And your grandparents still speak Chakta or something, then. You know, there are some exceptions, but by and large in the United States. Uh, Spanish is the main second language that is gonna be most useful for you to learn. It's not very often that I meet someone who speaks. Some language other than English and. And it's not Spanish. Did I say that right? There's not, it's not very often that I, that I meet someone who doesn't speak ling- uh, speak English. And they speak a language other than Spanish, okay? I meet a good number of people that speak Spanish and not English. But I don't meet many people that speak Russian and not English. So that's why I learned Spanish. And then the reason I learned French is because I live so close to Quebec. And I love going there. And circularly, a big part of the reason why I love going to Quebec is because. They speak French, like I don't go to Ontario very often. Um, I go to Quebec even though Ontario is actually closer to me. You know. Never been to Alberta or Saskatchewan, but I go to Quebec all the time. So. That was why I decided to learn French. Just because it's the closest, French is, uh, French is actually the. How would I say this? The, the area, the foreign. Or the area of earth. That has a language other than English spoken natively in that area. Um, of all the areas of, of earth. That have language. Languages other than English spoken natively in said area, French is the closest, okay? Cuz it takes me twenty-four hours. To drive to an area where they speak Spanish. Natively, takes me about thirteen to fourteen hours to drive to an area where they speak. French natively, so. So that's where I go. Lot of stuff here that I was missing. A lot of people who learn that many languages at the same time, they sacrifice other things, for example, social life. Yeah, I bet. Um, the best example comes to mind are, are most people who do AJATT. All Japanese all the time, uh, they sacrifice their social life for several years to get to a super high level. Ellen Jovan only dabbles in languages. She has studied almost every published Pimslar course. Wow. I haven't heard of this person, I'll have to check her out. Uh, Rasmus A says, Andy Roberts, she is such a Glossica fan, so I guess she must have devil in all languages offered in Glossica too. What's her name, Ellen Jovan? I'm gonna do a YouTube search here. Ellie Bob says, I think I'm different as being a shy person. I don't learn languages to speak to people, but just read. Uh, just to read books and listen to the radio, watch TV in a foreign language. If that's your goal, then, uh, I'm not gonna blame you for it. I'm, you know, people just have different goals than me and that's fine. Andy says, I don't know, Rasmus A, I've only heard her talk about Pimslar. Ellen Jovan sometimes gives the keynote address at Polygraph conferences. Interesting. Yeah, I don't think I've heard of her. I'll check her out. Well, uh, I gotta get going, guys. Yo, Kevin Abroad, hey, missed the entire livestream and then the content was blocked for copyright. Yeah, I'm disputing the copyright claim cuz I think I can get away with fair use, but we'll see how it goes. Uh, some of those abjitters are extreme, some spend twelve plus hours in Japanese. Yeah, that's pretty, I can tell you from firsthand experience, it's intense. Anyways, I'm gonna get going now. Sorry to leave just as some of you are joining. Um, but this video will be up and there's no copyrighted content in this video. Um, so I won't have to go through the process of disputing the crap, the crappy, the crappy. I've been fishing too much over the last few days. Uh, I want to go through the process of disputing the copyright claim on this video. I'll see you guys later. Happy New Year. Adios to Nader. Pr eighty-four from Puerto Rico. And Andre Avila from Austria. Man, I'm sorry to leave just as you guys are all getting here. Alright, I'll see you guys later, um. I'll see you guys. Ooh, I forgot to mention this. Really briefly, I'm gonna be in Mexico for two weeks, so I'm probably gonna livestream. Maybe Thursday night again, um, instead of Friday morning. And then I'm not sure what my video schedule is gonna be like for the next two weeks after that. I'll try to livestream or try to post, post some videos from Mexico, um, but we'll see. So, thanks for watching, we'll see you guys later.